Good morning, this is nine oh four, I would like to call to order the U.S. Senate with the special meeting of the Council. If you will please rise and uh. Budgetably, budgetably, sort of like. Depending on your. United States.
And Republic, which is down. With liberty and justice for all.
You. Please follow all.
Thank you. Greg Burnett. Not here yet, Mr. John Wolfstein.
Here.
Uh Johann Gooben. Miss Nora and Justin Eitner, here. Barbara Smith.
Here.
Ms. Nicole Ayers. Mr. Jalen Seed.
Here.
Mr. Noam Wiggins.
Here.
Mike in here, uh Ms. Jen McMur.
Here.
Ms. Melissa Murray.
Here.
Ms. Heather Dunn. Mr. Doug Sutton.
President.
Mr. Jim Freyer.
Here.
So Shanahan. Okay. Is it possible for them to be answered? We have a forum.
Okay, we have a forum.
They just said they.
Is there anybody that uh.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we address the council before you please?
Uh, there is none.
There is not?
Nope.
Okay, well, just a reminder, we will welcome everybody to a special meeting. It's uh always, we have this meeting at the beginning of the new session and kind of go over the rules, regulations, get to know the protocol process. Uh, wanna welcome back the re-elected council members and welcome the newly-elected council members. I look forward to having a good period where we work together. Uh, we know in the past that the. This is the key to success, not to take the key word, working together, uh, you know. Getting involved, but also just working as a team. So uh, we have, having said that, uh, I'm going to move uh forward and ask uh Ms. Young to make a motion to uh, I think we want to change the order of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, our Mr. Capola and. This is one of them.
Yeah, you have the right now. I sent the link uh eight o'clock this morning, I resent it.
I did this.
Are they gonna do both of the used to the conflicts and put some news? Alright, so we do, uh, you wanna go here uh.
And 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 can I ask is uh Ms. Woodstein?
I texted her right now.
We don't. We both had, we were supposed to hear him. Michelle and uh Mario.
Oh, yeah.
Just during their presentation, I sent them time to.
They're probably still over there, maybe agenda maybe.
No, I told them to. I told them to move them first.
I resent them at eight o'clock this morning, they're looking for the link.
Okay. So in light of that, we'll just move forward with um appointment of the minutes. And so um, all of you should have gotten received the email with your committee appointments on them. And we're gonna go through.
I think we got that.
Monday.
No, they're a little bit.
Shit. Lot's her.
We had everybody see the the five. And then, I mean, appointments.
It's it's on the bottom.
Yeah, we're, isn't it, the summer.
Yeah.
The last thing that's kind of everything. Yeah. So, in your packet, it's the last page, did you get one?
I didn't.
Okay, well, there we go. Do you have two? So yours is new, so you should have, you should have it in.
Right, this is.
Exactly. Right? It's in your, it's in your packet, you should have it in your. The last page. You got it, right? Yes, yeah. Alright, so we're gonna go over the assignment. So the community services, um, we have Ms. Nicole Ayers as chair. Our economic and community development, uh, Mr. Dr. Wolfstein. Do you want to read all the mentions as well? I have the video to that. Financing claim, Mr. Greg Burnett. Land, Houston Building Management, Ms. Barbara Smith. Public Works, Mr. Jim Freyer. Ordinance Committee, Ms. Soshanahan. Public Safety and General Government, Ms. Jen McMur. Recreation and Parks, Ms. Young. And we have two ad hoc committees that will meet from time to time. And we have Jalen Seed, Mr. Jalen Seed as the chair. And for our bad cop and sustainability and resilience, we have Mr. Johann Lopez. We've also. Will have to, from time to time, create a charter revision permission. And as it stands right now, I think Ms. Murray. Uh, will be the facilitator, but we do not know who will also be in that. But that is something that has happened in, as a council system. But we do know that we will be, uh, you'll likely this, uh, charter revision form. Quite, until we get the charter done. Thank you. Did you see? I have spoken as well, I'm definitely going to miss the minute.
Yeah.
So Michelle, uh, Woodstein will be joining us in just a minute, and I think.
So to the top.
Yeah, so we're gonna move uh item seven, dashboard presentation, um, up to the top, and hope to also move the conflict of interest presentation up as well, and hopefully Mr. Capola will be here by the time we. We complete the.
So Ms. Young, who knows, item all favor. Close. Restrictions, okay, the items are moved, uh, item seven and six will move to the top. Just under item.
Yes. Michelle. I think, well, I was already checking, sorry, multiple things we've gone, the whole participation link doesn't offer that. For the uh, the public, because I think I was checking what has been here. Um, we have to have a garden. Push that. Oh, I see Greg. So the friend here, oh, it's like, uh, mine, okay. So we have um. Ms. Nicole Ayers, who has joined us on, on Zoom, and Mr. Greg Burnett. Make that change. While we wait, you all be. Do you like?
Ms. Matthews, when you get off the last. Basically sitting there, she doesn't know what you're doing about.
Oh.
I don't know.
And darling, I'm doing this, I have some questions, like. Uh, the committees, like, what do the chairs do? What are their responsibilities and how are they represented on?
Yeah, yeah.
How, what, like, it's, it's all in, in the binder. So I'll tell you, we stood this last uh, um, council election. And we thought it was very, yeah, it's, it's, it's a good question, because I think prior to what's organizing in this way, that was a question. And so that is why we're here doing this, getting these questions, but a lot of that information is in the binders, as are the roles and responsibilities.
Mario appears to be on, do you wanna ask him if he can hear you?
Yeah, Mario, can you hear us?
Yes, how are you?
Are we good? Okay, so we can get started.
You're gonna discuss, so I'll put some in first, Mario.
Yes.
Thank you.
So uh, would you like me to get started? Uh, you ready now? Great, thank you. So thank you for inviting me this morning to attend your. Your orientation. Uh, before we get started, uh, for those of you who are new members, uh. I think I, at this point, maybe met all of you by this, by this time. But uh, I just wanted to provide you my contact information in addition to my email address with the city. Uh, which is always the best email address to reach me at. Uh, you could also reach me. Um, at any time if something comes up, you have a question, concern that you want to address with me, especially if you want to address something with me privately. Uh, my direct dial at the office is two zero three. Five seven one, one seven zero seven. For those of you, uh, and then also um, uh, my cell phone number uh is two oh three nine one five six five seven five. Uh, for those of you who I've, I've worked with in the past, you know, I'm, I'm generally uh. Available anytime, you can reach me on the evenings, if something comes up, and on the weekends, et cetera. Um, I mean, I pick up immediately, but I'll get back to you. Um, so please feel free to reach out to me anytime if, if you need something. Uh, and that segues to uh conflicts of interest. Um. To the extent that an issue comes up, uh, please feel free to reach out to me and, and we could talk about it, or we could, I could try to provide you with some um. With advice or some feedback on a potential conflict or, or other issue that may come up. Um, I'd recommend to all of you who are new members. That you take a look at the um Norwalk Board of Ethics Citizens Guide to the Code of Ethics. Um, it's, it's, it's right on the city's website, and it provides an introduction to the city's. Uh, Code of Ethics, and then the Code of Ethics is also um in chapter thirty-two of. The city ordinances. Um, actually, uh, darling, would it be easier if I just uh maybe sent an email so that you could forward that to, to the council? To the new members? Okay, so um. You don't have to, uh, you certainly don't have to study the, the, the Code of Ethics, but um, I think it's helpful that you have. A copy of it handy, and to the extent that you, that you wanna peruse it, um, it's there for you as well. The Citizen Guide is, is a. Uh, pretty effective summary of the Code of Ethics as well. So um, as a council member, I think first and foremost, it's important to know that. Um, it's an honor to be a council member, and, and, and when you have that honor, I think also comes with it some restrictions on what you could do. Um, you are now a member of the city, a, a city official, a, a member of the city's uh legislative body. And with that comes, comes certain responsibilities, and to some degree, some, some restrictions in, in what you do then in the city. And you have to be cognizant of your role. As a council member. Um, and so um. The, the Code of Ethics does apply to you as a city official, so it's important that you're, you're aware of that. Um, with regard to cons- conflicts of interest. Um, each council member must determine for him or herself. Um, if there is a conflict of interest which may qualify them from participating in consideration of a matter. Um. Conflicts exist uh when, for whatever reason, the member is compelled to consider a matter before the council differently than he or she would. Uh, if a different entity or, or person was involved with the matter. Um, and generally, reasons for conflicts are personal, are, are, are uh financial interests, um, clear conflicts, uh, family, uh, if you have a family member involved with the matter. Um, uh, a, a, a wife, husband, uh, a mother, a brother, um, in-laws count, even if you don't like them. Um, the very uh, a, a business partner, um, somebody whom you have an ongoing personal or business relationship with. Um, those would be uh conflicts that, that would probably require, that should require you to recuse yourself from the matter. Um. I think the prudent approach is to abstain if you have, you know, real doubt about it. Um. Uh, you know, you have fifteen members on the board, I'm sorry, on the uh, on the council, so. Your vote is not critical, uh, in that um, there will be a quorum generally to be able to, to perform, to, to, to take a vote and to, to have something passed with or without your vote. Um, so generally, I would recommend that if it's a close call, you don't uh take a chance of jeopardizing the council's action or credibility by participating in the vote. Um, my informal rule is, and, and I say this in, in my orientation of. Land, Esports and Commissions is, if you have to think about a conflict for, for more than a few minutes. Generally, you're probably gonna end up recusing yourself. Doesn't always happen, because I'll tell you. There are some very conscientious people on this council whom I've, I've discussed conflicts with, or potential conflicts with in the past, and determined, I don't really think it's a conflict, or even an appearance of conflict. Um, so uh, but, 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 but generally, when you think about something enough, uh, probably ends up being something that, uh, if it's not a conflict, it would at least be the. Appearance of a conflict. And that segues to, again, not just a direct conflict, like, yes, that's somebody before us who's. Uh, a, a close family member, a close friend, um, but rather uh, a parents is a conflict. Um, well, before I move on to parents as a conflict briefly, did anybody have questions about just direct conflicts and? Uh, you know, uh, I know, I know you have a lot of things to cover today, so I'm trying to be very brief in my presentation. Generally, when I do a, a presentation that includes conflict of interest, I spend a little bit more time, but I know you have a lot to cover today. Um, with regard to direct conflicts, did anybody have any questions, or would you like me to uh expand a little further on that?
Um, Mario, just to clarify, everyone does have a copy of the conflicts, uh, code of conflicts in their binders.
Oh, great. The Code of Ethics, you said?
Yes, uh-huh.
Great. Um, so uh, I guess just one, one more thing on direct conflicts. Um. One thing is, you know, what we're. To be cognizant of is that um, spe- you're on the council, you're obviously, uh, people know you, you know a lot of people in the community. Just because someone comes before the council and you know them, um, your kids maybe have played a, a sport together at some point. Um, you say hello to the person when you see him around town, doesn't mean you have a conflict. Um, as I said earlier i- in this presentation, the, I think the, the test is, when you feel that um, you're compelled to consider the matter differently because of your relationship with the person who's involved with it. That you probably have a conflict. Um, but just to give you some quick uh, uh, thought, uh, you know, self-test to think about. I- i- if some, if you're so close to somebody that you would have invited them to your wedding, or you did, you know, um, or if you had a birthday party, you know, at your house for you or your spouse, and you would invite them. They're probably close enough with you that you would feel compelled to treat them differently than someone else from the jet, um, that you maybe know in town, uh, who, who was involved with the matter before you. So um, again, on, on a case-by-case basis, you could contact me, we could talk about it, talk it out. Uh, these things, you know, uh, sometimes take. Take some time for us to, to figure it out together. Um, and there's not always a, a definite answer, it's, it's really what we, you know. Considering everything, what we think is the best judgment at the time. So moving on to, to appearances of conflict. Um, even if you are not compelled to, to, to um, to hit, to, to uh participate, to consider the matter differently because of. The involvement of some organization or some person that you have a connection with. Doesn't mean you shouldn't recuse yourself if it's at least the appearance of a conflict. Um, so um. Maybe there's a, an organization that you're associated with, um, that's before the council for a matter, and even though you don't feel compelled to treat them differently. It's the appearance of conflict because of your involvement, or your spouse's involvement, or your partner's involvement with that organization. So just keep that in mind, too. It's not always just. You don't just recuse yourself for conflicts, but you also recuse yourself where there could be an appearance of a conflict by your participation. And the reason for that is that. Um, uh, the, the public policy reason is that the pu- um, it's so critical that um. You protect the public trust in the council and city government, and where there's an appearance of conflict and you don't recuse yourself, you're jeopardizing the public trust in the council and ultimately in the city. Um. With regard to the um, to the city code, again, it's, your, your, your Code of Ethics is, is section thirty-two. Um, and those sections that I think are uh relevant, if you're gonna take a look at it, and I won't belabor the um. Belabor it by, by, by quote, by reading any further in the Code of Ethics, but I'll just give you references to those sections that I would take a look at. Our section thirty-two dash two subsection B is in boy. And thirty-two. Four, uh, dash four subsection A is an apple. Um, thirty-two dash two subsection B. Um. Talks about uh, you know, uh, officials of the city refr- refraining from personal business, financial activities that adversely affect. Their impartiality. Um, and um, that a city official shall not deliberate or participate in a decision or action of the city. Uh, which the individual is a member or uh, is employed if such individual or any member of his or her immediate family has any interest in the matter. Or be likely to gain or lose any benefit that's not common to the general interest of the public as a result of the decision of the action of the agency. And then um. Thirty-two A, I'm sorry, thirty-two dash four A, um, talks about in the event that uh, a city o- o- official has a, a known conflict. He or she shall disclose it in writing to the city clerk if such conflict is material. And uh, he or she shall recuse himself or herself from taking any action with regard to the city related to the comp conflicting transaction. Um, except as otherwise permitted herein. So those are just a few provisions uh of the code that are, are relevant to your considerations. Um, of a potential conflict. So with that being said, um, does anybody have any questions about conflicts, or would you like me to expand further on anything with regard to conflicts of interest?
Mario, I know that there's one thing that you talk about, um, what constitutes a meeting among. Council members outside of a meeting, right? Can you just talk about that, like, if we are all one place at one time, and there's too many of us, and it's outside of?
Sure, um, so uh, one thing that we should do, and we did this in the last, the last council, was to do a FOIA. Um. Informational session, and Taisha Tom, who was a, uh, Assistant Corporation Counsel, uh, took the lead in, in, in that session. And um, I'd like her to do that again with the new ca- with the council, since you have so many new members. So hopefully, we could. Get that scheduled for an evening in the next two months. Uh, darling, if you wanna maybe uh, give, provide me with some, some dates in the, in the evening, we could do it via Zoom. Um, so that, you know, it's, it's easy for folks to attend. Um, I think it's also a good thing for um. Uh, uh, that, you know, members of the council who were not new to also participate if they have the opportunity. Um, with regard to um, getting together, uh, if there's a quorum, generally, we say, you know, we have to be careful if you're discussing any city business. Uh, with um, eight or more, you're, it's a quorum, and, and, and that should be a publicly noticed meeting. Um, having said that, um, if some of you go out for drinks after a meeting, or, you know, um, it just happened to be together, um. Uh, I don't think that necessarily constitutes a meeting, but you have to be really careful about it. And also, it's not just um, getting together in person. Um, communications um amongst council members where uh, there's a quorum or more are, are also. Potentially subject, or probably subject to, to FOIA. Um, so I, I, I think one thing to be extremely careful of is to have um group uh emails or text messages. Um, with eight or more folks on the council. Um, I, I say this all the time to boards and commissions, you gotta be really careful about that. Uh, I know Greg has a question, it looks like.
Uh, yes, I have my hand up, hopefully you can hear me, it's not, it's, it's more of a statement. Um, in the prior administration, uh, we had set a date of Monday, January twenty-ninth. To hold a FOIA session with the Connecticut Fo- um, uh, Commission, the Office. Um, so uh, we just need to confirm that date. Uh, that was a date that they provided as. To when they would be available as our annual training. So again, that's Monday, January twenty-ninth, and I believe Jeff Spar. Is taking the lead to ensure that that date is still set with the uh FOIA Commission to conduct a uh virtual training session with the council.
Thank you, you know what, and I'm looking here on my calendar, it's there. Um, things get put on my calendar, I don't always get a, a message about them, but uh, maybe I did, uh, but yeah, so I see that on my calendar. Uh, we'll, we'll, our office will, will make sure we coordinate that with um. With whomever from the commission comes to uh, provide the training and that it's done in collaboration with uh, the training that we've done in the law department. Um, I think last time, Greg, if I remember correctly, uh. There was a miscommunication with, I think it was Tom Hennick, uh, um, for the last training session we did, where somehow he showed up at the wrong time, if I remember correctly, or showed up at City Hall, and we did it virtually, I forget what happened, but I think there was some miscommunication last time. We'll, we'll make sure to avoid that this time. Alright, so you have a session already scheduled for January twenty-ninth, that's great. Um, one other thing, um, uh, on FOIA that I, I know has come up in the past, I don't anticipate it being as much of an issue now. Um. Uh, is that uh, there were council members who were using personal email addresses. Um, and, and this was something that was a big deal, eight, ten years ago, it was a struggle to get folks to. Adhere to using their city emails for city business. Um. Uh, Greg, I mean, in, in your experience, uh, and Darlene, both of you in leadership over the last few years, has that been, I don't think that's, I haven't heard of it, any, of that being an issue uh, in recent years, is that accurate?
That, that is accurate, there was no issue. Um, uh, o- only in the, in the situation where. There was a technical problem, an IT-related problem with um, uh, a council member's uh, city-issued email address. Uh, where for a temporary period of time, uh, they were utilizing their uh personal email until IT was able to correct. Their uh city email problem, but it was not an ongoing uh use of their personal ID. It was uh only due to any technical-related problem.
That's understandable. And by the way, when, sometimes folks will email me at my firm address um about matters, um. And when they do that, I just, when I give a response, but I'll also say, please, you know, um, direct any bit, uh, any, 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 um, communications regarding city business to my city email address. But whenever I respond, I always put my city email address on it, or I immediately forward it to my city email inbox. And I do that, because if there's ever a FOIA search. Um, I could be limited to my city email address, every single email I get, even if it goes to my firm address by mistake, I immediately send over to my. To the city inbox, so that there's ever a search, I'm able to just search that email. And, and just, uh, uh, to that point, um. We've had, firstly, you could get FOIA searches, um, or somebody can make a FOIA request, and you have to check your, your email. Um, that happens. Um, we've also had litigation in the past, it was many years ago now, probably eight years ago, where there was uh searches on uh e- the emails of, of city officials. Um, and so uh. It's, it's really good practice that you have all city business, that's, that's electronic uh in your, uh, with, in your city e- uh, with. Being used by your city email, so that if in fact you have to do a search, the search is limited to your city email address and not any personal email address, and you don't get subject to. Having to disclose emails that um may, that are on your personal account. So just be careful of that. And, and to that, and also to that point. Um, I would be careful about text messaging, too. Um. It could be subject to, to a FOIA request, um, it could be subject to discovery and litigation. Um, so uh, text messages, WhatsApp. Messaging, just be careful about that as well.
Mario, to your point about the emails, um, we changed the email addresses now to read council member. Because what's interesting is, I think, when you have the regular email, you look like a city employee, as opposed to saying council member Shanahan. Um, I think, so you probably have got that yet. So I don't know, we sent it to you all, I sent it to both of your email addresses, the new one. So your council emails are now council member Shanahan, council member.
Oh, so the other one won't work anymore?
It works, but I think we're, we're gonna use the council member, because we all look like city employees. Arms, right?
Darling, can I ask a question about that? Um, well, will you make sure that IT has it set up so that? Um, if I email, or anybody in the city, or, or anyone, period, emails any of you at your uh previously-known email addresses, that those emails get forwarded to this new email address? It's gonna take a while, because so often, I'm looking at Jen McMurray, and I, I, somebody sends an email, they intend to put Jen in. And the old email's gonna populate, so as long as it's forwarded for. A long time, um, if not forever, I, I think that's fine, but if not, I would be concerned about the, the switch. I assume that's, that's, could you just verify that with, with IT, that there's not a, a stop date on the forwarding, please? I'd just be concerned if, if you didn't realize that they had it set, so after a certain period of time, it stopped forwarding.
Uh, I would. Question. Go ahead.
You, I know you said it makes it look like the city employee, but it's. Are we not considered, I don't know, we're common council, but. Let me, all the whole setup processes as, as the city's boards, so what's, what's the difference? Like, why do you want somebody at this point? I'm just curious.
Yeah, what's the relationship there, Mario?
Well, you're a city official, you are, you are all, all of you on the council are city officials. Uh. You're, you're city, you're city, you, you are, you are city officials. Um. You do get paid, um, if you could even call that a payment, what you receive, um, your, 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 your compensation for being on the council. Um. Uh, but uh, I, I would, you know, this, this issue's come up before, uh, um, and I know our personnel, your personnel, our personnel director has addressed it, I think it was, uh, Ray Bernie was last time. Had addressed this issue of um, the difference of, of a city official versus a city uh employee. Um, so you, you, you're considered as a city official, not necessarily an employee of the city.
So, so would you be, would the mayor be a city official or a city employee?
Well. I was. Okay.
But, I mean, the only difference I could think of is, I mean, I know at the end of the year, you know, city council people do get W-two.
That's what I'm saying.
And, I mean, I realize there's probably a distinction there, but technically. I mean, technically.
So let's not use the word employee, we're council members. So let's not use the word employee, we're council members at work, like whether you, you think you're an employee or not, we get.
It, it gets into, it, it gets into, you know, for example, if, if you're, if you're s- an employee in City Hall. You're either in the ordinance employee, or you're a, or you're, or you're subject to collective bargaining, so, believe it or not. In the city, in City Hall, I think there's probably, the mayor may know this even, uh. Uh, there's probably like thirty or less employees are not subject to collective bargaining, we're not in the union, we're not in a union. A lot of the department, even many of the department heads are, are union employees, I happen to be an ordinance employee. Um, but it's, it's, Mayor, would you say it's probably less than thirty employees total that are ordinance employees?
Yeah, I think approaching that, and I can't give you an exact number right now, but.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere around there, and so, um. Y- y- you have, so basically, if you, if you are an employee, this, you're either an ordinance employee, or you're a, uh. Um, or, or, or you're uh, s- an employee subject to collective bargaining. Um, so I, I think even though council members do receive a stipend, and, and even though that stipend is in fact taxed, it doesn't qualify you as a employee of the city. But we could, uh, you know, I could also get some further clarification from Tina on that, but I'm fairly confident that you're considered city officials and not employees. Yeah, just to give you a further example, in, in other communities, um, you may have uh, hearing officers. Um, who would hear a uh, appeals of, of blight fo- blight violations, or an appeal of a zoning violation. And those hearing officers would be, would receive compensation for those hearings, um. Since I've been here, we establishes, we established those ordinances, and we've been able to get lawyers, uh, some, I've had to twist arms to, to get to volunteer their time. Um, they don't receive compensation, if they did receive similarly a stipend, it wouldn't qualify them as being a city employee. Um, and, and qual- they qualify them for any sort of benefits as being a city employee, it would just be a stipend, and that stipend would be taxable. But, 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 but lastly, you're, you're subject to, most importantly, you're subject to the board of, to the code of ethics. And um, uh, while you may not get all the benefits of being a city employee, you certainly have the responsibilities, uh. To, to, to act accordingly, and, and quite frankly, you're kind of a, uh, um, almost at a level, uh, an elevated level, uh. Of, of, of importance and, 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 and of responsibility in being a city official, so it is a significant role.
Yep, I just wanted to, going back to the, to the, I just wanted to, uh, just piggyback on what Mario was saying and make a recommendation that if you. Are either employed by, you know, an entity, what, you know, where you're going to see items on the agenda. I recommend you ask Mario for a legal opinion. Um, when I first came on the council, I was employed by Norwalk Public Schools, and so I thought it was really important that, you know. It, that was a conversation with the legal department, you know, that's, you know, a very serious issue, and so, uh, Mario did research and went on a legal opinion for me. Um, so it was very clear when I needed to recuse myself and when, um, it was okay to be involved and discuss them. And I just think, you know, as, uh, as representatives of constituents, our ethical integrity is really important here, and you don't wanna make mistakes there, thank you.
I, I appreciate that, that's, that's a, uh, I appreciate you bringing up that example, actually, um, yesterday when I was preparing for this, just pulled some opinions of, uh, for. Uh, conflicts of interest issues, uh, the council members have raised with me in recent years, and I pulled a couple of opinions, uh, Barbara, for you. Um, concerning your questions about, uh, uh, Board of Ed matters. Um, so I, I, I appreciate that as a, as a really good example of, um. You know, if you have a, uh, involvement or are employed by an organization that has a matter before the council. Um, you, you should uh, reach out to me and we should make it, and then hopefully I can assist you in making a determination as to whether you have a conflict or even an appearance of conflict.
Any other questions for Mario? No, I think you're good, I think we're good, alright, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for having me, I hope you, uh, have a, have a great rest of the day with your orientation, thank you everybody.
Thank you, Mario, thank you. So we are having, we understand some problems with our, um, public participation. Uh, but we're trying to work on it, Larry is actually trying to see if he can get that up and running somehow.
So, is Michelle Woods Matthews here yet?
Yes, she is, right?
Alright.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, your honor.
Good morning, everyone, uh, my name's Michelle Woods Matthews, I'm the communications director. For the city in the mayor's office, and if I haven't met you yet, um, congratulations on winning your election. Um, I'm gonna go through the relaunch of the mayor's dashboard, but I'll start by saying. That it's definitely a really exciting time to be part of, um, the city of Norwalk, because as you all know, we have so much going on, which the dashboard. Details, um, I'm gonna share my screen in a minute, but just to talk about what the, what the mayor's dashboard is and why it's relevant now. Um, so before the pandemic, um, the mayor had a, had a dashboard with all the different metrics, but the public could see. Happening in the city, and we have departments updating them on either a monthly or an annually basis. And during the pandemic, as I'm sure everyone remembers, um, the COVID reports were, um, the daily priority. Um, and then they turned into monthly priorities, and they took priority over the mayor's dashboard, so, um. That gave us, um, a unique opportunity to relaunch the dashboard. Um, this fall, and it gave us a unique opportunity to kind of look at new data, um. And with, with fresh eyes and, and redo the whole thing, right, based on where the city is now compared to where it might have been five. Five years ago, when they, they launched the previous, um, dashboard. And the dashboard, as you guys probably know, is, is an accountability tool, right? It shows all the metrics and data and trends of what programs and services the city offers, right? But it also shows when you look at the trends, uh, maybe gaps, um, and where the city can improve, right? So it gives, it gives the public and you all just, um. A bird's eye view of, of everything happening, and I'm just gonna pull it up now so that we can take a look at some of it. One second. So if, and if you wanna pull it up at any time, all you have to do is go to, um, the city's website, norwalkct.gov. And then. Hold on one second. Okay, so you, you just go to norwalkct.gov, and here you see all the buttons for a lot of our major, um. Items that we want the public to have access to, and right in the middle is the mayor's dashboard. So I'm just gonna click it, and what we did is, we decided to create seven different categories, um, for the dashboard. Based on the city's and the mayor's vision and priorities. Um, so I'm not gonna go through all the metrics on each one, you can definitely do that on your, on your own time, but I think it's a good. Way to understand all the different things going on in the city, and obviously it doesn't capture everything and all the services and programs, but. Each category, I'll start with a livable city, highlights. What we want the public to know is going on, um, in terms of just the major programs, or maybe new programs, or maybe links to access services. Um, but the great thing is, we can always add new, new metrics, right, so we would love your feedback as well. Um, and again, this was just launched or relaunched in the fall, so, um, a livable city, for example, just shows a lot of the programs. That increase quality of life for, for our residents, and a few metrics we have here are, um. The, the breakdown of recreation and parks programs, um, but one, one really neat thing we have is. Um, in August, we, Recreation and Parks launched a new online. System called ActiveNet, where residents can go on and register for programs, rather than going directly to Recreation and Parks office. And I mentioned that because the dashboard in general has a lot of, um, unique access points, where not only can folks. Learn about the metrics and the programs, but they can actually learn how they can access more of the city's services, so this is one great example of how they can do that. And, um, the next one here is responses to customer service center inquiries, and I just wanna highlight that one in case, um. New council members are, are unfamiliar, but we have, um, now we have a three-person customer service center team. And they're really the primary point of contact between, and the fir- the first contact between residents and the city. And I think it's really impressive how many inquiries, um, they respond to on a monthly basis, it's on average here around fifteen hundred. Um, on a monthly basis, and they respond to phone calls, they respond to emails, um, and then they are also, you probably know this, but they're right, when you walk into City Hall. Someone's always right there, um, and they can respond, you know, in person. And then the fourth way they also respond, which we're planning to do more, more communications on, is our Click and Request app that the city has, so. Just so you know, if you go and download a new app and type in Click and Request, you'll see right away Norwalk CT pop up. And it's an app, and basically, in case you're unfamiliar with it, you can actually take a picture of something in the community. Um, and submit it with a comment saying, you know. What's going on with, with this sidewalk, or, or I found, you know, this. My trash wasn't picked up, and it'll go directly to the customer service center team, and then they'll redirect it to that appropriate department. Um, so a lot of people use that, it's a great tool, um, especially who. For folks who, you know, just wanna quickly use their phone, rather than making a phone call or coming in person. But we have a really great customer service team, um, and you can see here what they do. And then the other thing I just wanted to highlight is, um, our Community Resource Hub, I think this is one of the. Things the city is really, really proud of in terms of recently launched programs, and this is another access point for the public, so. The Community Resource Hub, in case you're unfamiliar, was launched, um, by the Community Services Team, um, in twenty twenty-two. And the Community Services Department is responsible for connecting anyone who calls or emails or comes into the Community Services Department. Um, seeking support in terms of either, um, it could be food, pantry needs. Clothing, employment resources, health or mental health, uh, related support. And the Community Services Team directs them with a, um, a provider within the community. And this, these metrics just show how many people and households the Community Services Team is, um. Has been supporting since the program was launched. And again, here is just the access point with all the links, you know, the phone number, and then it's also in English preall and Spanish, so. Um, I'm gonna go to the next page, but I just wanted to, to show you, you can clearly. View, view all of these categories on your own time, but just how many resources are, are available, um, on these. Uh, categories outside of the great metrics, and here as I scroll down, you'll see all the amazing, uh, metrics based on the. The services our library, uh, provides. And then here you have blight violations addressed, zoning com- compliance inquiries and, and zoning violations addressed, so. Really great metrics, especially when constituents are asking you about a ton of these, these categories, you can always direct them here. But just to go back to the other categories, I'm just gonna, um, go to a safe and healthy city to just show you a little bit about this one, so. Um. A lot of the categories were created based on the city's values and just showing the public what, what we're up to. So, um, a safe and healthy, healthy city really goes into the, the details. Of what our police department, or health department, and our fire department, emergency response teams are, are up to, and, um. I, I think it's a very impressive page, so. When you go to, um, well, the first metric is community policing outreach events, and it just shows the city's values and the police department's. Work to, in order to, um. Decrease crime, like what, what are our values in the police department is, has clearly been building relationships within the community, um. Through these outreach events, and it just showcases that, it also showcases, um, a major milestone last year when, um. The police department hired a, their first embedded clinician, caseworker, as you probably know, we have two now. In the behavioral health unit, and it, it shows all the, all the calls, um, that the behavioral health unit. And embedded clinicians are getting, um, and what kind of calls those are. So it helps, it helps, um, just make the public more familiar with, with what's going on in the new programs, and then here we have the police investigative calls. Which we had on the previous dashboard. Uh, we have traffic enforcement data to show how we've greatly increased, um, a lot of those, um. Traffic enforcements by the police department. Um, and just some other. Great data points that you can look into when you get a chance, it also goes over all the, all the different services that the health department provides, which I. You know, I don't think the public, um, or myself really, I wa- I was so, um, interested in, in learning about all the different. Uh, services the health department provides, it's, it's truly amazing, so, so constituents can really learn a lot, um. And access some great information on this dashboard. Alright, so I'm gonna go, um, and show another page. So this is an environmentally sustainable, sustainable city page, and this was a new. Um, category and from the previous dashboard, and it really goes into, as you all know, what the city is, is focused on and what the mayor's focused on, which is. Trying to make, um, the city the, the greenest city in Connecticut, as the mayor shows, but, but this really details. What, what we've been up to, um, in terms of the amount of trees planted, the Norwalk heat vulnerability study. Um, for folks to really learn about what. What we've been up to, and if you've never, and if you haven't heard about the, the Norwalk heat vulnerability study, um, you should definitely take a look. Um, we, the city, mainly the health department, has partnered with, um, Yukon to do a study on. The heat indexes and what areas within the city have, um, a rising temperature, uh, and what we can do, um. To combat that in terms of the threats of climate change, so just some really unique data here and resources. It also showcases the amount of hybrid or electric vehicles we have, and the amount of EV chargers we have across the city. And then it goes into some frequently, um, asked questions by residents, uh, we, you know, since. Residents are often asking about the wastewater treatment facility and capacity, we wanted to make sure to showcase that data here, so this could be a great resource for you all in case you get. These questions, and I realize this is overload data for you all right now, so I'm sure. You, you'll have some questions or can go back and look at this data, but just a lot of great resources, um, and a lot of great. Services that, um, over here DPW provides, number of catch basins cleaned, number of feet of sewer cleaned each year. Um, and then some, some other really popular topics, right, tons of recycling collected annually. Tons of food composting collected, um, and for example. The composting collected section goes through all the different composting drop-off locations in the city. Since we've added, um, s- some recently, so, um, give some great information there. And I'll just go through maybe one more category, um, I don't wanna bore you to death with all, all these, um. Metrics, and I know you can look at it. Again, but walkability and connectivity was another new category, um, from the previous dashboard. So this one has a lot of great metrics, it goes through the amount of installed sidewalks annually. The amount of paved roads completed, um, annually, number of roads paved. So again, a great resource, uh, for constituents to review, um, number of road repairs. Total linear feet of bike lanes, which as you can see has been dramatically increasing. Number of bike racks across the city. Each year. Then it goes into the Norwalk Transit District bus ridership, um, to, to see how. Um, the ridership is being used, another great resource. And then on the bottom here, it has, um, access to a lot of that great hiking trails and information. So I'm just gonna stop there, because, well, actually, I'm gonna show you one more thing, just because I, I think it's another really great change. Um, a fiscally responsible city, I just wanna point out here in case you ever need it, that. Um, you might get a lot of questions about operating budget for the schools, we showcased that here. Um, at the beginning of this category on an annual basis, um, how much, how much money the city is allocating. Um, in our operating budget towards, towards the schools, sorry, that is actually right here, let me scroll down a little bit. And then above is our operating budget overall, our re- funding for our rainy day fund, how much we have there. And then underneath the operating budget for Norwalk Public Schools, we also just have data on all the recent schools, the major construction projects. Just in case. just in case, um, you all are interested or the public is interested in, in what's being built and what has been built. It goes through the timeline of when, uh, it was come, the school was completed or will be completed, how much funding we use in the capital budget and the state reimbursement rate. So just a lot of great information for you all. And then here you have the, the grand list trends and data over the past few years. So I'm gonna stop talking there, um, and go back to the main page to see if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Michelle?
I just have a quick question. I think this is fabulous. Um, I'm wondering who or how often this information is updated, um, because it's a lot of information. And so who's in charge of that? Does it get funneled through you? Do each of the departments have access to it? And how often is it updated?
Yeah, that's a great question. So every month, um, all the, all the folks who are responsible for updating the dashboard get a monthly email reminder. And, um, whether their, their metrics ask them to update it monthly or annually, they get that reminder. We of course have to check, check on the data, making sure that it's updated. Um, but I, I work with the IT team to make sure that it is. So all the data should be updated, for example, from October at this point, um, and they get that monthly email, but it's, yeah, departments across the city updated.
Great. Thank you so much for putting in all that work. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Any other questions? I'll see if anybody have their hand up on the screen. Okay, well, thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Well done.
Thanks, everyone. See you later.
I think I need, it needs to be said that this is a pretty new process, right, that we've gone through with the city. And I think it's been in response to folks who say it's hard to find the information, we're not being as transparent as we could possibly be. And I think getting this information up, so people have access at twenty-four seven. You can go on the city's website anytime and look at this information. And, and the key is though that it is updated um, on a regular and consistent basis. But who knows to us just really getting this, this done for the city.
Yeah, and that was the whole purpose, uh, accountability, evaluation of the programs, like you said, uh, and the transparency. So people can see where their money's being spent, they can see how many roads are being paved, they can look at the crime data and get all the information uh, on that, uh, site as well. So there's a tremendous amount of information on there. If you wanna just one day have nothing better to do, just start through it and see. Cause it's really, uh,
How, how would I answer this? Like, how many people, uh, view the page? The, is it, is a lot of people that, uh, view the page?
Um, I don't know. Michelle would have to answer better, or, or, um, Joyce Lou, I'm not so sure.
Sorry, I couldn't hear the full question. Can you repeat it?
Okay.
Can you hear? Oh, I just said it. I couldn't hear the full question. Can you repeat it? I can't. I just couldn't hear the full question.
No, she can't hear us.
They just said you need to repeat the question. Can you not hear us?
No, I can.
But can they not hear us in the room?
We can't hear anyone.
Okay, that's a problem. We can hear them, Michelle, but they can't hear us.
You say you can't hear me.
I can hear you, but they can't.
Michelle, do we know or have a record of how many people view the dashboard?
That's a great question. I don't, I don't have that information now, but we can, I can ask IT and we can get that information.
I think Joyce probably hasn't.
Yeah. We'll circle back.
It's not?
Uh, I, I think it's amazing. It looks beautiful. It looks really user friendly. My only comment is, I personally would like to, I'm someone who has a really professional, you know, we, if you want to do this with my guy, like I have beautiful graph on community or community tour. It looks great. But I'd like to know where the data comes from. So if you read it at some point, you can put links to where the data is coming from. Because I think when you talk about transparency, people are, oh, yeah, they have great graphs up there, but you know, very different way to data found would be really helpful to have those links to where we're getting it from.
Uh, we'll work, uh, help Joyce.
I'm just saying, I think going forward, that would probably be really helpful for us that like to really analyze data a lot.
I would also just like to put a plug in for that click and request app. Right. Folks that are not experimented with it, it's really great and the response times are incredible. I could not believe how fast. It's a very great pull my hair for, and really thanks to the customer service, it was really perfect about, uh, way they, you know, share things and get like quick fixes on stuff.
And I think one of the way you increase traffic is through us, right? It's really sharing that information on our website to be on the data, to let folks know.
And other things that may wish to be included that we don't have there right now. So we're always looking for ways to improve it, to make it, uh, more easily navigable, uh, make it, you know, updated on a regular basis and other information that perhaps is not on there that we should have, so.
Alright, if there are no other questions or comments, thank you, Michelle, and enjoy
Good job.
weekend and great job. It looks beautiful and, uh, that's it.
Thank you.
And I'll say we had it come on because we thought that this was important, right? So that we know where all this information is and so that we can say to folks, hey, let's go to this site if you've got some questions. Do that. So, thank you.
That brings us to item five. Uh, there is in your handbook, uh, the rules of the common council and, uh, the role of the council. So, uh, early, why don't you, uh, pick this up?
Alright, I guess we're gonna do that. So I think it's under G, right? Uh, E?
E and nine.
E, rules of the council.
So we can just kind of quickly go through this and, and I, and I lean to the experience of Mr. Sutton and it's, it's, uh, 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 Smith and all of us around the table in there, chime in whenever. Um, because this is a group thing and we're all gonna talk about this together, but we, it's important that the new folks know, um, how this all. So we're on that page, rules of the common council. Um, I think we all kind of know this, the, the, this, we, we meet on the second and fourth uh, uh, Tuesday of every month with the council meeting, uh, the caucus meeting, the Monday before each council meeting. Um, and that's been a standard. And I think for this month, I'm just gonna put it on, put it out there while I'm thinking about it. Our next meeting, we all know is December twelfth. Um, and I don't believe we'll have a meeting on December twenty-sixth. And so what I'm gonna say right now is for all chairs to reach out to your, um, your department head and see if there are any testing issues that need to get on the agenda for December twelfth. Right? If you're not, then we know that we will then move on to, um, calendars. Um, this, this is just standard practice. All requests for items we place on the council, you have to file more than electronically, um, with the city clerk. And so for appointments to boards and commissions and agency, the council or secondary zoom, resume. I, I that's kind of a strange one. I don't think you need to go through the whole, right? Um,
Excuse me, question? Yes, um, yeah, I don't, I, I'm, I'm, um, those on, unless, unless I didn't get it, are those that are Zoom, we don't have the full package that people have in front of them. I
You were emailing, you were emailing, but it's the stuff that's in your, your binder. So you got your binder two years ago, didn't you?
Alright, I, I didn't. Hold on, can we have, hold on, can we have one meeting, please? Deline. I, I, I have to, maybe I didn't get it for some reason, but my question is, my question is on, when you, when you mentioned when we meet, um, do, could you elaborate on the mode that we meet? Be, meaning that we meet in person for the common council meeting? And Zoom should be an exception.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I, I guess we better leave it up to the individual council person. Um, are you, you're saying that you only should be on Zoom if it's absolutely necessary or?
Well, I, I'm, I'm bringing this up for discussion because we just kind of glossed over and said we meet the second and fourth Tuesday, but I think we should elaborate on the mode in which we meet. I think we, we've somewhat set a, a understanding that the preferred method of meeting would be in person in the common council chambers. And I think it's important with the new council members that we have some kind of understanding, some kind of standard in terms of when we say we meet for common council meetings, what is the mode of meeting? Or, or does it not matter at all? I'm just saying we should discuss this item now.
Yeah, that we, that we decide. I mean, listen, this virtual thing has changed the way we meet. We, we, we provide opportunities in person and virtual just for the reason that we've got right now. We have people virtually meeting and people in person meeting. I think we can talk about that as we move on. I think the, 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 the community and a lot of folks would prefer us to be in person. And we try to do that whenever and wherever we can. Um, because you, you know, we've got some folks that say we should be meeting. And I think, um, what we're doing right now is that we're saying that our, our, our common council meeting is in person unless you're, you're not well or you've got something that's keeping you from doing it. So I think that the general rule is that we are meeting in person for our common council meeting. Um, we may want to decide that we want to still come back to caucus meetings. For me personally, I don't mind having a caucus meeting at all. Um, so we can talk about that. I don't think there is a hard and fast rule. I think we've been very flexible with that, um, given just where we are, where we moved to the virtual arena of things. And so I think collectively, if we say this is how we want to continue, I think then that's it. So that was the generalization of meetings and I hope, I'm sorry if that was a little confusing or not as clear, um, as it should have been. But I think as we move forward, we can say what we want to do, if we want to do that. And I, and I also feel like even the committee meetings that we have virtually works quite well. And it's an opportunity for folks who can't make it in person, um, to be engaged. Um, I think it's a barber and a bit too. And just to add to that, I mean, you know, for me, I feel a personal responsibility to my constituents to be in person. Um, but of course there are times when all of us, and you know, thank goodness for this Zoom option, right? We have, um, you know, people who are sick or people even, you know, who have to be out of town for some reason, uh, yet you can still call in. We have, you know, a lot of, uh, moms on the council and, and dads who, you know, have childcare issues and, you know, sometimes will need to zoom in. So I think the, probably what Grace is getting at, it's not something you like to advantage of or assume that, you know, you're gonna zoom in all the time. Um, think, be thoughtful about your decision.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's exactly the point I was making in that this just, we should, when we said the word meeting, we ju- I just wanted to make sure it was clear that the preferred method is to meet in person. However, there is flexibility to meet virtually, but your first option is to try to be in person in the council chambers for the second and fourth Monday of the council meetings.
I'm, I'm new, but I know like our first caucus meeting, we had discussed the, like, the first meeting in the month in person. I mean, I was new, but it felt good, like everybody, I was being, yeah, to move for a coffee, so I don't know, um, if that's something that we discuss now or later, but.
And I think it's an all-in-one discussion and, and we can, we can decide how we want to do that. Uh, but I think having the option of virtual
Yeah, it's always good.
is, is, is gonna at least get
The more
most people.
And more people are getting access to the meetings.
Right.
Uh, I forget, well, I don't know what the number's at now, but there was a, a significant increase in the number of people that were at least tuning in and watching the council meetings, uh, watching somebody, uh, planning and zoning meetings and other meetings that are being streamed uh, live. So, uh, we, the significant increase and, you know, a lot of people enjoy that because they couldn't come to meetings before. As you said, when they have childcare, transportation issues, uh, you know, working late, that kind of stuff, so. Cold and environmental concerns are still
Right, like this is the season, so. Sharing the love. Heather, did you want to say?
Alright, any other comments about that?
They might want to say that the first meeting of the month has to be had.
Right, right.
So, the second meeting is optional. So that's why we said on the twenty-sixth,
Right.
uh, at this point in time, we're, we're not planning on having a meeting.
But I think for, for our basic standard, we always have to, when we, when, when there's a holiday or something that comes up, then we're not, we'll have one.
Yeah, like Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Santa Claus didn't retire.
Santa Claus didn't retire. Uh, he retired. Um, so when we go on to talk about number four, the items submitted to the city departments, shall be placed on the agenda. I don't know, we can kind of read through this. I don't, I don't want to have to go through every one, right? Um,
Yeah, and if you have any questions.
Questions, you kind of, you can just kind of talk about that, you know, it does say for number six, we have to have at least ten meetings per year, right? Is that, um, you see number six there? So that, that's, that's what we had to say. Ten meetings, no less than ten meetings.
Yeah.
You see that number six? For the committees. Not the council, the committees.
So the items submitted are probably committed.
So, 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 so we'll ask, so items on the committee come from your department, right? Your department, whoever you're with, right? So just help me out. The items come from there and they get on the, the city departments. So we'll take renovation apartments, for example. Those items are generated by the, by the department head, right? And based on what, 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 um, we said in our budget, what, what, what we're going to do, right? And so those items then are placed on the agenda through the department. As a council person, you should be reviewing those. They should send them to you. You review what's going on and, 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 um, then those items get placed. They go to the mayor's office, the assistant city clerk, and the city clerk kind of handle that. I know when I was the assistant city clerk, that was the work, the work for the council. And so all those things came to, to, to the assistant city clerk. And it came the Friday. There's a deadline of when those have to be in. Um, the council packets go out the Friday, um, before the Monday of the caucus. Um, and so there, there, there's a timeline and those things have to be into the assistant city clerk's office before noon. But that's the responsibility of the departments. But we just kind of oversee that process.
Well, just for, just so you know, sometimes things don't come to that, but there's importance and sustainability and we create our own agendas.
Right, okay, right.
You know, we don't, we're not staffed in the same way.
Right. Right. And I think what other department is not, not like that. I think every other
Well, a portal housing.
Well, well, those, because those are ad hoc, right? Right, the ad hocks are ad hocks and those are not, uh, um, standard committees. They may go away, probably will go away. So that's a, there's a lot more flexibility, um, and with that. I don't know if there's another committee.
And go on, just to clarify, I mean, the committee chairs work with the committee staff to make sure that the agendas have everything that's needed and the brackets are complete. Um, so I, Heather, I think maybe your question would give a step back, which is to say, most items go first to the committees. So the committee chair and the committee work with the staff to bring everything to the committee.
But it's the staff that
Right.
are responsible.
No, no.
Your chair get it to you.
But, but I just, right now, okay. But I will say in this, it, 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 there was something that sounded a little confusing and it does sound like that. I, I don't think we micromanage our department heads. We are there to work together because it can become a little, no, no, no. I'm just being, I'm not, no, 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 that's what I said. It, it can feel that way and get that way when, when we're constantly that there, we have a responsibility, but we also have to allow the departments to do their job, right? Um, and, 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 and not constantly, but there's a, there's a time.
But so if you as the, I don't know, you call it the, the chair of that committee, do you have to approve the city department person putting it on the agenda or no?
Well, yeah. Yeah, well, they, they bring it up in committee and then it advance to the council if the chair wishes to advance it.
And you ever have conflicts where you're like, okay, city staff, I don't know, big one. Or we'll have, doesn't matter. I don't know. So if you have problems with like the wedding going, you know, a Steve, I don't think about, Steve Clappett says, I'm putting this on and whoever the chair of that says, no, we don't want to talk about that or is it kind of like that? I don't think so.
Yeah, it's so weird.
Right.
You know, but I, I don't think there are occasional times where, you know, something needs to move forward. Um, and there might be some discussion to hold off for a month, you know, so you talk, the, the chair was on it to the, uh, but, but most times we want to be really transparent when we bring these items to the committees for public discussion. Then they make a table from there, occasionally brought, you know? But what's really important is that a public discussion happens.
And also I think there are some transactional scenarios where an item is time sensitive for whatever reason, sometimes with grants. And the committee chair does have the discretion, sometimes to bring it straight to the full council. I know Jenna McMurder, of course. And the committee chair does have the discretion, sometimes to bring it straight to the full council. I know Jen McMurder, of course, safety had to do that a number of times because there were grants where the opportunity to apply for the grant was on a very against time period, and it had to be approved by the council by a certain date. And so therefore, they only get through a committee and it just had to. But otherwise, it
Yeah. What is all of, so everything goes through, the committees are where all the work gets done. And so, but so you see us at the council, we've all had those discussions, and that's why we go to have the caucus. So the committee, the work gets done at the committee level.
Right.
And if you decide at the committee level that there's an item that you don't want to move forward, you don't move forward towards with that. But that's where everything gets moved forward from.
So who who's responsible for making the committees? Like all committees that we have, who, I know we got the ad hoc committees, but who's responsible on in making the committees?
What do you mean, assigned committees or rich?
Assigned, like, yeah. Committees, like, I don't know how, you know, how this can do, I don't know how long we've been around. But like for places that have our committees, those are something new, right?
Exactly.
So who's responsible for bringing those to the, the reason why I ask, because I think, you know, I'll, this can be a conversation for another time, but I think it should definitely be a DEI group, but but who's responsible for making the committees?
We, 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 we
If there's an the council will form the end.
Yeah.
They they correlate with the city departments.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, because, you know, because each department has work that needs to be done, contracts that need to be approved, you know, and so it it correlates with the city departments. So DEI, for example, that, I mean, you, the DEI department actually, you know, uh reports to the mayor, however, that would, um, you know, items around that might fall in community services.
Right.
Right? So everything's cut under these eight committees.
I said, yeah, the the important thing also, uh, if you need to work with a department head, you should go through the department chair. So in other words, you need to speak to somebody and record, you want something done. It's easier because one of the biggest complaints I get is you know, somebody will uh, uh, send something to the council, a citizen. And each council member will now call that department head and ask about it, and this takes a lot of their time. So, you know, if there's obviously any questions and you need to get some information from a department head, it's best to go through the committee chair, let the committee chair get that information, so it's all coordinated. And we don't have eight, nine people calling one department and kind of disrupting their day, so.
And I think that's the process, I'm sorry, go ahead. I think that's the the process we should use. If you have an issue and and you could not contact your committee chair and work that way. If you have an idea, you go through your committee chair. Um, I think that that is the best way to handle that. But it sounded like it sounded like it's a matter of D A, E I.
Well, so basically, so she answered your question a little bit, the um, DEI, or excuse me, the ad hoc sustainability and housing committees came out of this retreat two years ago. So I mean, this is the, this is one of the many things that this body can do, is think about committees. We also, two years ago, slightly changed the organization of a couple of the committees to reflect the reorganization the mayor had done with the department. So these committees are bodies of this council, and we as a council determine the history of the work that we do. But again, to another point, the work is done through the committees, when we identified a need for a new committee, we developed one. Um, and that's part of our work, that's the
And the ad hoc is the best way because we've already got eight committees, standing committees, and so those committees are there to do the work and can be dissolved uh, when that work is done. Yeah.
Um, this might, I don't know if this is the right kind of rate up, but also like the equity and justice were all like commissioned. I don't know like the status of that, because that's the question, Matt, we get a lot. Um, I noticed select to pick up.
That was a, that was a discussion, and uh, it's still on the table, but others felt that we have the DEI officer, uh, we might not need somebody in between the DEI officer and the council, or the DEI officer and the mayor. So I don't, we haven't formally decided at this point.
Oh, just, um, Latoya gave a presentation a couple of months ago, you know, the services department about provision for the uh, human justice. Yeah, we have to, so it's it's more, it is being more, so that's an update, I would say, to the chair, the chairs, or for nothing. And there was a lot of, is it issue with the order because we already had standing committee that might overlap, so that work, right? So they look at whether it should be this one or that one, we're doing.
Um, Nora?
So I, and maybe a clarification is helpful for the new folks as well. I think just stepping back to sort of the org chart to think about this. So the council is a separate legislative body. We have our own committees that we control. The boards and commissions are actually created either by the charter or by ordinance. And so when, and those boards and commissions, then once we have created them as a council, we may have the opportunity under the ordinance or the charter to fill a couple of seats or otherwise, but they are then in separate entities, they are not uh, council committees. So it can get a little confusing to talk about, you mean that we should have a new board or commission, in which case this is a conversation to have with Lisa about an ordinance potentially, or do you mean, you think we should have a new council committee? In which case, it's the conversation to have with Darlene to talk about how we organize that. So I think, just to be clear, to make sure we're talking about the different terms of what we're actually interested in here. And then I guess all issues, obviously, E I and otherwise.
Is there anyone on Zoom who had a question? Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I don't see any hand. Okay. All right. That was good.
Sorry.
No, 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 come on, that's that's why we're, that's why we're here.
I don't know.
Uh, so for example, um, just uh, same public safety, and you were saying that Jen can just do things. She does not, you, you don't have to have a public safety committee meeting, that monthly meeting for her to actually do some of that. She could actually email and say, is it okay? I don't even know what it is. Do that, that's that's the last thing that we want to do. So so we only do that if we have, if it's time sensitive. Um, we will, but you can, but we'd rather you need and have your council meeting, a committee meeting, because that is public. And so we don't want to get into the habit of just moving things to the council for for just that man.
Mainly on time sensitive things.
Okay, yeah, we'll we'll do, Nora and Jen, okay.
Um, so yes, just again, just to clarify, um, this is really important. We, as a city, we do not take votes electronically, it's why we now. So we need to take our votes. And so that's actually very important, um, and you'll care more about this from folks, but when um, a committee has an issue that comes up, they will, they, you know, they send information to you. It's not a request to sort of come back on email and give your opinion, because that actually then constitutes a meeting. We may have unintentionally violated the meetings law. So informational emails will go out, but they'll go out in the context of providing information that then will be discussed in the meeting. Um, the, and the exception that Darlene's referencing is if it needs to skip the committee and go directly to the council. But even there, they will then come to the full council for a vote. So we're, we don't have a practice of taking email votes on things, which is very different than many corporate boards and very, and many nonprofit boards, which is, yeah, I'm very familiar with as well. That's why I'm asking it.
Completely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of inefficiencies built into complying with the open meetings law that coming from a corporate board or nonprofit board context will absolutely appeal. Um, but we are, our practice is very much that it always has to be done in the full meeting and not by an electronic vote.
Yeah, and just to give you an example, it's kind of or something like that, right? Or something instituted directly to the council. Um, so for example, on November seventh, this election day, the public workers committee was unable to meet. And so, you know, that involved having discussions with um, with Vanessa Valteras in advance. She brought as many thing, any items that she could to the outdoor meeting, knowing that we would want to miss that November meeting. However, something came up with, it had a an important deadline. And so, um, I made the decision to move it forward directly to the council. And there was, you know, then the caucus will talk about it. You, as minority leader, uh, you know, will receive, you know, you and Laura will talk. Or Darlene will talk, you know, to to make sure that, you know, you're aware of it and you have all the information. And and you're on every committee, so you will get it. You'll get me.
That's what she wants to know she can do.
I think Jen had her
We'll start now, because women's
Step out of our huge room.
Why, we're, yeah, that's why, that's why you're here. Um, Jen, you had to hear that one, sorry.
No, that's okay. I put it down. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, um, any other questions on that? I and and I have, and I and and I think the practice is, is that if it's going to straight to the council, your committee chair will let you know, yes, right?
And she's going, she's going, it can go through the council president.
Yes, and so we'll let you know that these items are going to the full council. Any other questions about that?
Uh, this, Barbara, you said that, um, the DEI under the community service?
The DEI officer reports directly to the mayor, so I think that
Have committees.
Um, but she presents often to the community services committee.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you know, because her, that's, you know, it's the community that's our, right?
And I I just have to say, Monde, is a maid, I have a strong statement, he knew his person, and what he's done, but yeah, that, I think we may even
All right. This is kind of, I don't want to go through everything. Um, so just kind of look at this, um. The rules of the common council may be suspended up to two-thirds majority of the vote of the members present. I'm just, we use the Man Mason's manual uh, for as our legislative process. Um. What's more, what's important here? All papers and documents filed. So the city clerk and the clerk, or the, the mayor's office, the city clerk and the assistant city clerk is where all that work gets done. Um, and so they need that information to get to someone to sign the meeting. Uh. As you can see here, you you all saw the agenda from last week. Um, so here's just the 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 process that we go through and through. Um. So anybody see anything other here that's
Really quickly, I'm dying, again, just to be very clear. Um. So no contract is valid until it has been approved by the council. So the committees discuss it, and you'll hear, that's where the active, again, to point darling, thinking all the active conversation about it, all the questions and concerns really typically get worked out in the committee, but it is the vote of the council that actually makes it official. Um, so again, if anyone has any confusion about that, just because the committee has approved it, does not make it a valid contract.
Okay, um, the timing, we know all of our meetings are at seven thirty, um, all our council meetings, the caucus meetings. So here's the thing that happens. Some of the chairs, um, may or may not change the time of the of the of your committee meeting. Um, so we're leaving that up to the chairs. We try to keep it consistent, but that's, that's your prerogative, um, if there's a conflict. Okay, the committee, the council meeting, of course, stays the same. Any questions?
So we want to explain the consent calendar, because that might not be a much, something like that.
So everybody understand what the consent calendar is and what that means. And that just basically is, is that we've all agreed, both both parties, um, on the agenda item. And so we don't need to speak for that. At times, we do agree on things and have consent items, but we'd like to present it um, before the the, at our council meeting to the public, and so that's when we take the items off consent. And usually, that's, that's, that's what it is. And and if we have folks that are we're not in agreement, or we want to have a discussion, um, those items are off consent. Um. And so that that really just kind of makes our council meeting more concise, and we just kind of move on with that. Um, I think it's good sometimes to talk about things that are a little controversial, um, just so that we, so folks know that we are talking about the things. Because what I, what I see and sense, a lot of times when people talk about we're not transparent, is because all fifteen of us are sitting around a council table, and we've approved everything, and it sounds like we've talked about nothing. And so that, but that work gets done at the committee level. And we learn that as you go along, that that's where it gets done. Anybody can add to that if you'd like to, um.
And those committee meetings are public?
Yes, of all of our meetings, yeah.
Is there, I don't know, is, I don't have the right time, but so at those meetings, the public can, um
They come, the public is invited to every meeting.
Right. They don't speak to those committee meetings.
No.
Oh, they do?
They do, we do, we have public participation, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yes, there's something new.
Yes. Yeah. So and 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 you know, there's, you'll have people that come to your committee meeting and talk, and they will speak to the council meeting and talk, and 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 that's, that's good. We we need that, and so, yes.
So public hearings, if we want to come out, different, for instance, with ordinance.
Can you speak, can you all hear, Lisa?
These guys, I don't know, because they're all there.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah.
The public hearing on the specific ordinance would be separate than the public comment on the agenda item. And the public comment can only be on agenda items, correct? We should maybe make a point, and people would have been into, you know, at a public hearing, I don't know.
Uh, no, no, the public hearing, I think, only see it on the evidence. In this case, or I don't know, the other committees, public hearings.
Yes, yeah, management building, it has to, public works, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just, you know, you want to, it's it's an extra step in the legality of
Yeah, it's usually a little quieter, that statute is a little quieter.
So what you'll do with a public uh, hearing is in December, you approve in your committee a public hearing for the next meeting in January, and that's the
And those in public hearing notices are required by charter and statute to actually be made farther advanced than a typical committee notice. So they get published in the newspaper, they get published on the website, so they do have a whole, some extra layer of formality.
And those public hearings, are they usually in person or are they used to?
Usually in two, more than what this is, as I said, we didn't talk to people that
And the, but I think we provide both opportunities, but we do get people that, right? I mean, it's for some of us, yeah.
Yeah, but the legal order, because, you know, we had it in person, we wanted people to have that, usually it's a regular committee.
For you, I I think, I think some of us kind of do generally, I think you, we do either way.
I think that's part of the transparency issue from what, you know, the neighbors and stuff, is that being in person, we don't welcome there. I think I'm new, the way that you see you, you don't know what other, you know, your next door neighbor there or there.
That's right.
I don't need you. And you shut them down, and then you say
Yeah, it's absolutely
I know, I think, yeah.
But I
But there's
I think
You're going to weather my
For a second.
I don't think you can, so if you're a public real public, you're watching this, I don't think you can look at the
Are you listening?
We can, as we can. We only can see one place that are free.
Yeah.
So I think, uh, I wonder if that's not how you change your that's why person, everybody, how do you people like
Maybe we we we
There are my team.
It's the, what she's saying is that in the public hearing, people don't know who's in the room. So you could have fifty people, or you could have two people, and they can't see each other.
Right.
We're only able to see them, and so I guess we have to see
I can't see, yeah. She never, the the frequent offender, right, or like, oh, that's the person that's talking to you like twenty minutes over.
You get to know the Yes.
No one.
So, um, I, this is something we have talked about, my tea, I know, and that is not something that they can be able to fix. But I think maybe what we could do during a public hearing, uh, oh, I wonder during a public hearing, is that the the committee chair who's running the public hearing can say we have so many people who are participating, you know?
I think a lot of stuff, you know, I mean
Boo.
But you can even listen to names.
I don't know.
Just games and people like
You're not, I don't want to Let's, but we'll try and look that up.
No, I, I think we've heard, we've heard it before.
That's kind of the perception, it's like, uh, so for example, you have the zoning thing coming up in our area, the voters are controversial. And we want people complaining, whatever. I, that's a common counter, I would want to know which of the abiding property owners have taken into that room meeting, whether they actually listened to what's going on, or whether they're just talking to complain, you know what I mean? As as a I think that's
Yeah, Jen. Yeah, Jen.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm having a little trouble trying to follow some of the conversation here. Um, on regarding public hearings. Uh, are we saying that if there is to be any discussion or any kind of public hearing, that it's got to be separate, and that cannot be, and it should not be part of the committee meeting? So in other words, if we, if I have a committee meeting next Tuesday, and there's an item on there that we we want to take a look at, uh, raising some fees, for example, which requires a public hearing. Do I have to have a pub, a separate public hearing on that, or can I cover that public hearing as part of the public comments in our um, committee meeting? Also, I guess if I was to do that, I would have to publicize the fact that there is a public hearing. And, um, uh, would I, and I guess the timing is what, twenty-four hours on that?
More important than that, I think, is at least
After a public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, so to answer your
So, okay, so let me, let me do, let me just finish my thought there. So um. Also, should we also be publicizing the fact that there is going to be a part, a public hearing as part of my committee meeting? And uh, should I have that in uh, multiple languages?
Good question. Um, so to answer your first question.
Good question. Um, so to answer your first question, public hearings are held as part of regular committee meetings. But yes, they do have to be noticed as public hearings. Um, and you. With, um, I think Zoma and the staff member for your committee on that, because there is a whole process that they go through, we've got a whole routine. So, but yes, the public hearing does have to be noticed, is more than twenty four hours, I believe it's seven days, um, under the current, under the new charter. Um, but they can confirm that for you. Um. I personally, I think the language issue is a really important one that, uh, several of us have wanted to discuss. And I think we were all kind of waiting for the new council to do that. So I personally do feel like we need to begin, um. Increasing our publications in Spanish, potentially in Creole as well. Um, and I think that's something we'd really like to talk about. Um, there are trust issues associated with it that we need to investigate, um. But I think it's, this part of this tended, this discussion was to purpose issue, but then people would like to to investigate. So it sounds like you are also saying that you would like to investigate doing public hearing notices in Spanish, at least. Can you hear Ed? Yes. Can you hear that, Jim? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I think I got that, yeah. Um, I I think it's important that we do this, because, you know, as Lisa will, uh, attest, uh, we did catch some fl- some some flack. Um, on the ordinance, uh, public hearing, but, um. I think particularly the subject matter, if we're talking about, for example, new fees, increases in fees. Which is going to affect people across the board, certainly we should have it, uh, uh, announced to in 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 multiple languages. So the, uh, that people understand this is what we're going to talk about. The only other thing that comes up then is, uh, do we need to have a translator available to, uh, interpret, uh. People that may have questions that don't speak English.
We've done that in the past. I've had public hearings where we've had, um, virtual and in person and breakout rooms. Where there were folks who were able to do the interpretation. And I think we did it in both Spanish and Creole. So what we need to, we 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 do that. And I think, right, with your, with your last public hearing about the, uh, leaf blowers.
I wish that we had the capability, though we didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
But I agree, I, it's actually something that I would really like to see us undertake, and I think is the conversation that we like to have with IT. Because there are maybe, there are technologies, so I think it's a conversation we like to have with IT, with Irene. But it's good to see if we can begin a process of doing that, um, consistently.
Now, do we, do we have a separate service if we need an interpreter?
They will do that. They will do that.
Okay.
So they've got some, a couple of folks, right, that I think we've got that we use. In actually, these are in person, this actually.
They'll actually show up too, like, I know, like, we want, I need a Creole, you know, or that. I can schedule it ahead of time and someone will actually show up where I am.
So I don't know if we have a staff, anyone on retainer, but I know that we do have a couple of people that we reach out to that we just sort of, for both English, I mean, both Spanish and Creole. Um, anybody else have a hand?
Um, and with with the notice, um, maybe we could, um, leverage our relationships with community groups. Um, as the way they like to do the notice, it's because like, you know, like the hour, even social media, like our websites. Aren't like that effective, it's because it doesn't reach everybody. But maybe like, there's like community groups and all of that, we can have like, just a list that we send out, put this in the public hearing, the different thing. Um, that can, there's groups on Facebook, there's groups out there. And that way we can maybe get the most people to know about this stuff, because a lot of people complaining online. Even though the city posted on the web, the website and on social media, they complain that they don't hear about it until it's already over. Um, and it's just, it's hard because it's in a digital age, the way the algorithm, algorithms work on social media, everybody doesn't see. Everything, even if you're following certain, um, certain pages. But maybe we email those groups, they could all like share, and that would just maximize the amount of people to know about the public hearing.
But I think even as, you know, the fact that's something that we do as well, but I think, yeah. And I think, but I also think that we lead people to this, to the city's website, because there is so much valuable information than that one thing that we send them. So that link, yeah, you send out and say, hey, and maybe they find something else that they're interested in. And 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 I think promoting our website would be the 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 way to do that. Anybody else? There's so much.
Um, and one of the many things that I don't know that we're going to get to, the important thing with time, but, um, the assistant city clerk position, again, just so everyone is new with the way our kind of status of that. Assistant city clerk position is currently empty. Um, we have a job description that we used last year, we are hoping to get it fairly quickly, input and thoughts from folks on that and get that reposted. That is the kind of thing that the assistant city clerk may also be able to, um, assist people with. And so, um, definitely use our ideas that are really valuable gathered, think about what kind of role we want someone to have. Um, because this assistant city clerk is, um, under the charter, is designated to assist the council in their business.
I'm glad you said that.
Is there any kind of, um, demographics that we have? So I know there's way more languages than those two other than any. Is there, and there is there a threshold for if we have two percent of our population, we include that. You know, what is our Creole, skin population and what threshold does that lead to? To what we're removing, that's where is there a way as we be inclusive of everyone? Somebody comes here, there's the, um. You, you know, Ukrainians or either, and and how do we accommodate everybody and objects?
Well, I I think normally it has been, um, Hispanic and, um. Creole that was Spanish and Creole that we are are trying to affect. But we do utilize the language line, so the city does have the language line. And I think we can glean information from that, if you see, if we say to departments, have you seen an increase in folks, I don't know what.
Yeah, we haven't seen an increase.
And language line and what that looks like. And so that's a good thing, we can look and see. If it warrants us being able to, because that costs money to bring all these folks in to do that sort of thing, but that's a good idea for us.
Maybe community services, if they track those kinds of demographics and see if there's any changes and how, you know.
The fair and human relations department used to do that, um. When Adam was there, when we had that department, so we can find that information out, I think, right?
I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to settle this.
But I I I also think the assistant city clerk issue is 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 relevant and and we need to get to that. Because that is the person who really does the administrative work in the past that we would want to get done. Um, and it's a little, I see when you, when you, when that position is not filled. And so there are so many things that we've talked about that we would then, that, you know, that person would be the person to kind of work that, spearhead that. The issue becomes, it's a two-year, uh, ordinance position, um, and so, um. While we're talking about it, what you brought it up, I think we need to move on that quickly. Um, and hopefully we can find somebody local. I think the process we used last year, we did try something different. We did go out and and we tried to recruit someone, that took longer than we thought.
Over six months.
Over six months, and 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 it's very hard to find somebody to come for a job for two years or less than two years. And 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 we had a young person who picked up and moved here and and we're we're now still looking for someone. And so traditionally, and I know, Mr. Sutton, you've been around and you know how that process works. That traditionally, um, that tradition, and you can jump in there at any time, has been filled by someone local.
Yeah.
Who's had some dealings with the political, you know, um. Party, doesn't matter what, with the with the political space in in Norwalk, um, and. I'm hoping that we get back to that, because that's going to be the quickest way that we find somebody that would be willing to do that and can hit the ground, and knows the players.
I'm just going to add to that, I mean, I could not agree more. It's got to be somebody local who knows Norwalk and knows those artists, absolutely.
Yeah, there was somebody the last time that they interviewed.
Um, Esther Marula, who who, um, actually, um, I think is still on the DTC. Um, in some capacity, would very well, it's, uh, assist. So we have to, we have to find somebody. Uh, any questions on that? No? Uh, anybody on what? No? All right. So what are we going to, any other questions about, um, council business and is there how we move forward? Again, chairs, reach out to your, if you haven't already, to your department heads. I see that some of you have already. I don't want to interrupt, I just have one, I want to make sure that I just recommend to the new people, um, to, you know. You don't have to do it right away, but I recommend to make an appointment with the chiefs. And go in and get an update from the chiefs about, you know, any items that, you know. They've been working on or any items are coming up, or you have specific questions. I know when I first came on, it all felt really overwhelming. And, you know, just to really understand these items that are coming to us, that we have a responsibility to to vote on. I found it really helpful to make appointments with all of those people. And they're great, they're all great. The chiefs, yeah, the the department heads, you know, so, yeah, and they're listed, the staff people are listed on city, um.
Yeah, it's staff.
Oh, no, no, city staff, you know, so for example, um, you know, it on public works, um, there's a lot of, um. There's just so many items that can be really confusing, right? Make an appointment, maybe a couple of people at a time want to go, so it's easier on the staff. Make an appointment with Vanessa Valderas.
Right.
Who can, you know, let you know about, you know, some of the items that they've been working on, flood mitigation, for example, things that have been going on ongoing years.
Go ahead, because I was thinking of something that you should. Jump on with Barbara and, um, say something, you know, um. Think about making it small groups and, but not too, but not too, not too big, right? This is the, one of the funny lines, again, to get to, I think, the question that Heather sort of raised flag for us. You want to always make sure that you are not doing anything in a forum, either a forum of the council or a forum of the committee. So if you're, so, you know, for the new folks, maybe three of you should go and meet with the department head who are respected committee. Three is not a forum, so you're fine. It would be best that you not go with four people from the same committee, because then you might be triggering a public meeting of that committee. So keep yourself to three or less and you will not get in trouble. That goes for text messages and emails as well. Doesn't, you know, that's a good sort of rule to keep in mind. But absolutely, I agree with Barbara, like, be efficient of the staff's time also, so try to group it if you can.
I I all, I I I I think, though, that that is a really good thing, that we might even want to really just set as a, as a practice. Because it is a lot of time that's taken away from staff and everybody keeps coming in, that seven people, I want to meet with you, talk about the same thing. And I think that's a chair set it up, like you said, and then you get that, and you can do too. You can do an evening and say, hey, let's take twenty minutes or half an hour, let's answer any questions that you might have. And I think that that could be something that we do moving forward. You know, it's a good idea. And and I'm I'm sure, you know, a lot of us feel this way, the more you learn. About, you know, the depth of the work that's being done, the more you recognize you need to learn.
Right.
It's just endless, it's endless. So, um, there's just a lot, so. And and the thing that we're talking about agenda items, and this is something that I had to learn. We 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 we've made decisions for the city, um, we vote on things, we come up with ideas. Uh, the last time around, um, Nicole Ayers mentioned this, uh, community pool. Um, well, with recreation and parks going through our master plan study, that's one of the things that came up, a community pool. Um, that's the process, that's how this works. But we may not see that community pool in our duration time on this, on this council. But we know that, um, the community supports what was, what was mentioned, but what, um. This air presented to us. We all know that we lack that opportunity, that access to to swimming in the pool in the city. Um, but that's what happens, and most of the items that you vote on are out of our, out of our budget. Right? These are things that have been voted on, we said they were going to do, and we we get that done. It takes a while. We might be voting on projects that happened that we talked about a year ago. Right? Because of the process to get these things done, that's the bulk of what we do. Um, we make other things, other changes. I think sometimes we come in thinking, the community wants this, we're going to get it and we're going to get it tomorrow. It's time, right? It's, 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 it's. Um, so I think once you you realize that, um, it 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 come, it becomes a little more, uh. Easy to 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 deal, although we, I I I, like the ordinance issues, those are things, I don't know if that was actually in, um. In the P O C D, maybe it was. I think some of those things.
Sometimes the city generates some things that, you know, that can be together. Something I have on my life, or, um, getting together with that, so sometimes it's. Uh, the part of our, we think was the, uh, part, but other times it's us and, and, you know, we need to. Deal with a candidacy for different issue or something came up, um, you know, state law change, so.
The garbage is.
Is a little different, no, very, very, right, right. And you're probably the one committee that is that way. Um, so, go ahead.
Um, we did not include the charter in your package, but I do recommend that everyone read the first eighty six pages. And I'll send an email to everyone with the link for that. We, of the city charter, uh, no, we don't, it's, it hasn't been.
The only one is in the, in the council chambers.
But in that charter, it outlines what under the current charter, the council's responsibilities are. And where we have authority and one of the important, one of the requirements under our charter. Is that this, did the council approve every item of spending over a hundred thousand dollars? And so that's both of the items that you will see is us doing that work, um, because the city cannot spend more than a hundred thousand dollars without the council's approval.
Has there ever been any talk about making a committee that's involved in the P O C D instead of having a, so, um, did that take some?
Yeah, that's basically, that economic community development, I think it has to do with developments in the city of Norwalk. Generally gets run through the economic community development committee, unless there's some reason that, for example, there may be a development portion. But if it's the parks master plan, it's going to go through Racks and Parks. Um, in general, though, I also want to just comment something. Generally, I know with committees, I know something that economic community development is going to be doing is having each of the department heads come on in the public meeting. And give an update of what the current state of play is in their departments, what current projects are going on. That way, if you do want to have an, or if you do want to have a meeting with, like, just on chat or anyone from that county, community development, you're not going to come and start against your.
So he has to be under.
The parallel, climate conservation and development is obviously everything planned, it encompasses almost all the departments, anything having to do with development. Or, you know, I mean, it's literally in the, you know, it's in the name, any items related to that are going to go through the economic community development committee.
Um, years ago, and and, and I mean, you might remember, or Greg might remember, um, when the P O C D was being updated. There were numerous, numerous public meetings that involved, not the most recent, I believe, one prior to that.
No, the most recent one.
Well, the the one prior had about sixty nine pages. Ours now has over three hundred pages, but we brought in stakeholders and we had many, many, many meetings. And went over a lot of different things and then, uh, yeah.
And then that, you know, ultimately came to the approval of, um, how it grew then, it was planned at the time, but now it's the economic community development. And the current P O C D goes through.
Twenty twenty nine?
Twenty twenty nine.
It's a tailored.
Yeah. So in a few years' time, it started, you know, creation of.
Yeah, I I believe the, I mean, it it of course, it used to be a planning committee, a commission and a zoning commission. And it used to be the responsibility of the planning commission essentially to work with the idea being that every ten years they update it. Now that the planning and zoning commission's been merged, it's going to be the work of planning and zoning commission. In addition to city departments and the common council to put together a twenty twenty nine through twenty thirty nine, planning conservation development.
And and one important thing about the P O C D and even the efficiency study. I think one of the things that we need to do as a city is to make sure that we are aligning the things that we're doing, aligning what's said in the P O C D.
Which makes the P O C D really important. Which needs that you need a lot of community engagement involved, and I I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a more limited perception of the, the one piece longer wasn't.
Uh, but I, but what, but I'm getting to, we we as a city and as a council. What we do needs to align with what folks have said they wanted to see happen. And I think we're doing our best to get that. So that is, we got to get to that before, that is really the dive of what we do. Like, if we're, if we're doing something opposite of what folks have said, clearly said, we wanted to have done. We need to be able to just find that too. Why aren't we doing that? And the efficiency study as well, we're talking about how we being as efficient as we can in the city. And so we kind of have to keep that in mind, um, as we move through this process. Uh, the chiefs do have the responsibility of assuring that they are following guidelines of the P O C D.
Oh, I I I understand all that, Mark, but but there there was so much public. Numerous. Public, but let's just talk about why we're putting that in there, and this is just me. Not the most recent one, the prior one, there were many master plans for each area, you know. So like, if you live on the waterfront, what your neighborhood looks like. Has involves, you know, waterfront usage, where I am, you know, it's like.
has involves, you know, waterfront usage, where I am, you know, it's like, trees are important in maintaining trees. I don't think there was as much of that in the most recent one, because each kind of neighborhood didn't get together and, um, work on that plan. So when, when we're addressing things, like the new zoning rewrite, you know, it might have been helpful to have more guidance that way in P O C D. Um, and so as, as we move to the new zoning rewrite, it might, since the references to P O C D to some degree, to have, to have more information to go on to create that.
I mean. I, 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 I'm sorry, I think the correlation, right, we, we're making zoning updates, upgrades, and right, how does that align with what we said we would do?
The only I would just add, just.
The statute has ever, they've been so different.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'd add is just a little bit of context. I remember I started on the zoning commission, right, on the twenty-ninth, the most recent P O C D, the one through twenty nineteen, was finished. And so there was a deliberate sort of timing where I, where the city hired the consultant who ended up coming up with the first draft of the new zoning, we read it, so, right, uh, update, had, was fully of the most recent planning conservation development, and that it was actually a, sort of a, you know, clear message from Mayor Ealing and Steve Kleppen and the team there to make sure that the new zoning regulations are in con, in force, conform with.
In force.
Uh, uh, with the P O C D. Though I realize we're talking about this now, but actually that rewrite process has started in like twenty nineteen.
So we want to be efficient on our time, it's ten fifty-six. I guess we should have programmed another hour, because we've had some stuff to do. But I think, I think this was good. I'm, I'm glad we were able to do this, because I'll tell you, I've been in this, this space before, where you, where you, you know, the first time we got, you got an email that said, welcome. Oh, hey, welcome to. And I were big, obviously, like, welcome to. And so, and so we are, I, I think this is, this is good, and and I, and I know that we're going to do this moving forward, but I just want to go back and say, one of the things that we also want to do, and it, and it came out of just us having conversations, is setting two or three priorities as a council. And I know we don't have time for that today, but I think we can continue this conversation, you know, just communicating with each other, come up with some ideas, and we need to.
Green city.
Green cities, um, housing, I mean, it, 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 it's, it's, it's popping up.
I, go ahead. I just want to give you credit, Darlene, for this, the whole onwording, um, packet. I mean, it's something, as soon as you came on the council, you recognized that we needed it, and you made a council, you worked for a long time. If, you know, go back a few years now, but you're the one that did all the work on it. So I just want to say thank you for that.
We did it together, but it's, it's a good thing. But before we go, though, I just want to go round a room, you were quiet in your land, so have me entering all of your thoughts here.
Like, just, I don't know what you're saying. It's, in fact, I can't imagine starting this role without, um, this is true, this is the. So to very well detail, I'm going to go through every event, so, yeah, I'm going to say anything for everyone that's supporting this, this.
Mr. Williams?
I'm good.
You're good? All right. Mr. C?
Yeah, I didn't know we, I just brought that here, so.
Even though we're a strength man in a strange place. Yeah, and so, Mr. Sutton, you're, you're well acknowledged, and we're going to have to, like, pick your brain, and you're going to be able to tell us where we've been and where we need to go. I appreciate that. And, and Nora, I appreciate you. And, and I just thank everybody for this opportunity, and I, and I feel like we're going to move forward together in a really positive way. Everybody online, on Zoom, thank you guys. Oh, Miss Heather, you were, I'm sorry, how are we getting? No, no. But, but that's what, that's why I were. And Melissa on Zoom, thank you very much for being here. Do you have any questions?
No, thanks. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Now I need a motion to adjourn if we're all finished. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Deline.